Pit bulls and pit bull mixes. Some have also banned rottweilers and Doberman Pinschers. The attacks are not the fault of the dogs. This behavior is in the nature and most times cannot be trained away. Responsibility of our attack fall directly on the owners who disregard the safety of others. Why do they need to own a dangerous breed of dog? I know some will say for protection, but many other reasons such as affection, reason for exercise, fun and love are readily satisfied by other safer breeds. I do not know what laws we have in Tustin that pertain to controlling dogs. As Ben Johnson said in a recent town council meeting, enforcement of some of our laws is difficult. I hate to complain without proposing a possible solution, but I just cannot think of one. I am writing this because I want to know about, I want everyone to know about recent events in our part of town. Thank you for your service to our town. Sincerely, Susan Powell. A second correspondent is from Star Hesse. Over the past four months, town officials have been asked to provide written statements of the status of the January 3rd 268 code compliance investigation request submitted to the town for the January 14th, 2020 meeting. Since then, these requests have been reviewed at the February and March town meetings, posed in written public comments at the April 14th Zoom town meeting and followed up again in an email dated 4/15, which was attached to this email. As there's been no response from the town, I re-submit again to be addressed at the May town meeting. The questions requested are as follows: written notification of the current status and show that the 280, 268 compliance investigations listed on our old business and to check and conform by written public comments. And please ensure that by April 3rd email to the supervisor and clerk is entered under correspondence in those meetings. While acknowledging the difference difficulties in the COVID-19 epidemic as opposed on the execution of official duties by town officers, I hope that enter the 268 code violation investigation on their old business, listing of letters and emails on our communications and a brief monthly statement to the status of the investigation and meeting minutes will not provide unduly burdensome for town officials. Knowing how busy you are, I thank you for attending to these requests in your earliest convenience. A letter was sent out to Star today regarding that and to the board. Those are only two correspondence of payment of the bills. Bruce and Jill audited the bills for this past month. Any questions or comments regarding that?
Just glad to see that we got a better, better price from Schmidt's wholesale. That was great, but other than that, all the bills are fine. I mean, that was fine. That was fabulous. Yeah.
Our expenditures for April, general expended $33,346.21. Highway expended $25,087.31. Water expended $20,132.60. Sewer $18,046.85 for a total expenditure of $96,612.97. I would make a motion that we pay the bills as presented. Second from Jill. Bruce?
Hi.
Jane?
She's muted. Unmute Jane. Bottom left-hand corner, well, on my device.
I have a question.
Okay.
Does that water abound to include the repairs on Bridge Street?
Not TAM.
It does not include TAM.
It does not.
It includes a bill from Schmidt's, but we still have TAM's bill out.
Okay. All right. I'll approve this.
Okay. Brandy?
Hi.
And I'm an eye. Our division reports, the highway report, their monthly report for April, they used 425 gallons of diesel fuel, 333 gallons was for highway and 92 was for non-highway use. They used 210 gallons of gas, 56 was highway and 154 was for non-highway use. They patched holes in the dirt and paved roads. They stockpiled stone for summer use. They removed snow equipment from trucks. They cut trees on and along the Kuscheckton Turnpike, Gables Road, Cullen and Oak Street. They mowed the right of ways with the boom mower and the swept roads after the winter and they're getting roads ready for paving this summer pending the release of their chips Water and sewers monthly report. They read water meters. They worked on removing the top layer of dirty sand in the sand bed number two. They handed out boil no water notices from the New York State Department of Health on Main and Bridge Street. They flushed dead end hydrants. They replaced three hydrants, one on Main Street and two on Bridge Street with the assistance of TAM. They handed out resend boil notices from the New York State Department of Health. They pushed back the brick wall at the post office due to the hydrant being too close. They installed a new barrel of caustic soda at the sewer plant. They turned water on and installed water for three houses. They took final meter readings at one house. They fixed ruts and driveways at well number one and well number two left over from the excess of mud. Cobra line pumped and cleaned dousing tanks at the sewer plant. Cleaned and organized the warehouse, the updated fire hydrant maintenance cards, wrote out a new route for reading water meters. They replaced the valve box for the lumberyard curb valve. They located and repaired a curb valve on Delaware Drive. They mowed it well number three. They turned the water off to a house due to a water line being hit. They met with Cobra Line at Kirk Road to figure out why one of the pumps wasn't working. They tested the pump to determine that the pump needs replacement. They sprayed sand bed number one with chlorine. They exercised the generators and they dug up a septic tank to check for a blockage and they filled it back in with sand. In those three hydrants that they talk about, that took three days, three full days that they worked to get that done. So that was good. The building department code enforcement does not have a report at this time, closed in limited hours due to the COVID-19. Assessors' monthly report for April 2020, during the month of April, a data collected by property inspections was entered into the computer for the tentative tax roll and property record cards for the parcels files were updated. Updates to the system from the Department of Taxation were done with the assistance from our Department of Taxation reps. Star reports on eligibility were updated in the system and the roll was submitted for processing before April 15. The tax roll came back on May 1st and is now posted on our webpage and in the town offices. Once the push is done for the tax roll preparations, I normally try to stay away from assessment chores for a week or so to recuperate. During this time, notices that get mailed with the assessment changes were prepared and the publication for the River Reporter was prepared and submitted. It appears the taxable value has increased by $2,781,769 for 2020. Some of this may change after grievance hearings are completed. Deed processing has been minimal as the New York pause has slowed down property transfer in sales. There was a Zoom Sullivan County Assessors Association meeting in place of the face-to-face meeting and it worked quite well. Discussions were held on various towns ways to have grievance day in May with New York pause. Very few were planning to meet in a large hall and stay distanced, but most were learning to Zoom or other virtual means to have grievance day and stay safe. I am opting to follow Zoom routine. For my required sitting with the tax roll, I advertise by phone or email during the four, four-hour periods that I'm required to complete. It was also noted that most of the assessors' offices throughout the county were closed to working remotely until further notice. Sue, do you want me to give you a report?
See if anybody has any questions. Did you get the one from May?
Yes.
Yeah. There we go. I'll do it. I'll read it. The five-year strategic plan scheduled for May 30th is on hold due to COVID-19. It was felt that that meeting was needed to involve a great many people and it was better to postpone it until people could get together. Annual awards banquet is now hopefully scheduled for Sunday, August 30th, Central House. At the last date of the year, if it doesn't happen on that date, it won't happen in its usual format. There's a river shoreline cleanup grant proposal due May 22. The tag grant deadlines are still in effect for the end of August, but the town can write a letter to UDC to request an extension. And I don't know what the issues are that you guys are having, but I would be happy to try and help you get an extension if that seems very necessary. The problem is the end of the fiscal year for the UDC is September 30. So the only idea I had on that is maybe changing some of the parameters, but it's tough to do that, I think, with grants. The project review handbook, that's what everybody uses to review projects. There was a series of rollout meetings planned for town officials, planning zoning boards. It's been put on hold. And the idea of having Tom Shepstone do a PowerPoint presentation videotaped, which could be offered live or remotely, is being explored, which I think would probably work very well. So I don't know where the rest of it is on the computer, but let me see. Oh, there we go. National Park Service. Okay. Interesting that they've got a grant from Friends of the Upper Delaware to do test plots on not-leash removal. And one is at Skimmers Falls. They're going to keep Larry Richardson and County Shekton advised, and I think we should all be aware that that's a problem everywhere and that if there's anything that can be done about it, we would love to know and be a test plot. The big thing that happened for Tustin, the 10-mile river access, NPS decided to restrict trailer boat launching. And they added it to the superintendent's compendium, which makes it official for at least a year. And Tustin's alternate, Evan Pato, has strongly protested that trailer boat launching does no harm to the river. The UDC has referred this to worm. They weren't at all consulted about this and they're going to follow it up in the worm committee. And I was surprised because when the issue was discussed at length, Don Hamilton presented the park service's view that the river is constantly changing and therefore NPS was opposed to any improvements at TMR. So I have no idea where this is going to go, but worm committee will definitely not let it go. Jessica Wyman, acting superintendent, reissued a letter requesting that Jessica be reappointed as a permanent physician here because she's been very wonderful to work with. She said there's been an official search and it's likely somebody else has been already hired. We sent the letter anyway. Chris Heister will be here for 14 days as she wraps up her service. Jessica's detail is due to end the end of May. We also objected because at this time of year with all the craziness that's going on, it just seems unfortunate to send somebody else in. The renewable energy position paper, this goes on and on and it's because it needs to be added to the land and water use guidelines, to the RMT. There's a very good present PowerPoint on this that Jennifer Claster has done. The question is whether a town can approve the addition to the RMT without a public hearing. So municipal law varies, whether you're in New York or PA. If any of you know enough about municipal law or have been through something like this before, a resolution that the board could make approving this position paper, which I think you're all familiar with, or you could just watch the PowerPoint, you know, and say yay or nay. But I don't know if that's legal. That's the problem. And some folks in Pennsylvania say, oh, they make objections. And I don't understand because I don't understand Pennsylvania's rules. So I think that's about it. What have I got here? Yeah. That's it. If anybody has any questions, I'm here.
Thank you, Sue.
Hello? Is that good?
Brandy?
So the energy committee met twice this month, and so I'm going to give you the second meeting because it follows from the first. I don't want to be redundant. In attendance, and we did it on the teleconference, was Jennifer Porter, her husband Scott Porter, myself, Star Hesse, Cory Ann Manzel, who's from the Center for Eco-Technology in Massachusetts, Benji from Benji and Jake's, Naomi Hollis, Catherine Lewis and Dan Paparella. So it's a full group. Anyway, we're working really hard on the horse, which is our food scrap digester. And so the updates on the timeline was up to Jen. Jen presented grant documents that she presented to the DEC. DEC required 50% of the grant to be paid by the town to impact bioenergy. And they're the ones who makes the horse in Seattle. It's a custom make, so when you buy a unit, you have to give them half of it so that that particular, you know, machine is sure to be bought. So within one month, the town will be fully reimbursed by the DEC with proof of payment to impact. And that's just to keep us honest. So we didn't buy a car, we bought the horse. First, it kind of, oh, before we get the machine, we're going to have a public secret hearing. That's on May 26th at 6:20, I believe. Is that right, Crystal? There's no time at the end. I think it's 6:20. And Michael, who's the owner of Impact, who makes the horse, will attend Zoom meeting so he can answer any and all technical questions.
Yeah. We'll be there as well.
On Zoom, it's posted at 6:30.
Right. Yeah. Yes. Okay. So the operations and onsite discussion was led by Scott Porter. He met with a person from Boars Head who wants to give us the town five-gallon collection buckets and lids for free. So that was a really good thing. They're UV-protected and food grade. They just throw them out. So it's a good kind of recycling effort and then we don't have to purchase them for the businesses that are going to be part of this program. Jen and Scott are speaking with Michael again at Impact about the pad requirements for the horse. And then Scott, Jen and I will meet with Dom Niger about the best location for the horse up at the highway barn. Then the business and food donation outreach was Cory. She took feedback from all, what she did was everybody reviewed the flyers that I made based on her wording and she sent it out to everybody. They all reviewed it, gave some input, and now I'm revising it all with and editing with the new information provided. I also gave Cory a list of 18 Tustin food merchants and their contact information. And Cory's going to schedule a visit to Narrowsburg from Massachusetts to speak with them all in July. Everything's been pushed a couple months back because of the pandemic. As the farmer's market, that was my area that I had to look into. The farmer's market at the union opens this Saturday from 10 to 1. I'm going to be meeting with Jennifer. We're going to meet Brendan Widen and that's the opening day. And he wants us to determine where we want our informational tent. Originally Greg Schwartz, who runs the farmer's market, had kind of integrated it into where the vendors are, but because they have to social distance every tent, that left less room for them. So we're going to probably be near that little victory garden near the front, near the sidewalk so people can get information and learn about it and see if they're interested in participating. Let's see. Because of the pandemic, SUNY Sullivan didn't get back to Dan Paparella about students interning at the booth for credit. So instead Naomi and Catherine are going to be manning the tents, but we're going to start in August because we don't think we'll be set up until September. But we'll have a month out there to inform and give information. Market development for probiotic plant food. There's a farm called Good Fine Farm. They're interested in our plant food and Cornell Cooperative Session wants to test the product on plants to see how it grows and they measure that. Dan is also offering to test the plant food in his new hoop house. LED streetlight update. Ben and I have been working with NIPA, New York Energy, New York Power Authority to sign the contract with them. And then we will be owning our own streetlights replaced with LED bulbs. The pandemic has delayed installation, but we're like first in line for Sullivan County. Soft plastic update, as of May 8th, the TEC has collected over 3,200 pounds to date. Now have a second free track bench. It's on the main street deck and check it out. There's two of them now. They're socially distanced from each other and they overlook the rivers. It's quite nice and that shows our recycling effort and everybody, thank you for contributing to that. And then one last thing. Star Hesse, who's in our committee since day one nine years ago, has been announced as the UDC 2020 Volunteer of the Year and she'll be awarded at the UDC banquet. And I just want to say she's a tremendous asset to all of us and I thank you so much.
Thank you, Star.
She's muted, so she can't see you. All right. That's it. That's all I've got there.
Thank you, Brandy. Crystal, don't believe that Kathy, did she sign in?
No.
Okay. Zoning rewrite, we've got no report at this point. Jane, do you want to go with grants and comprehensive plan?
Sure, 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 sure. To Sue Sullivan, I'd just like to say that we are working diligently on the comprehensive plan, which is one of the UDC grants that we have outstanding. And I'm quite confident that we will have enough information for that grant to be nearly completed by the time that's allotted. So I think we're okay there. As far as the other grants that we have going, well, I'll leave, we'll talk about the Little Lake Erie Culver in a bit. The Sullivan Renaissance Grants have been put on hold, but I did receive an update that they are going to look at them. They'll have a meeting with us to discuss our proposal and they won't be awarding any grant, however, until the fall. But they haven't done away with the community impact grant, so that's good news. Let's see, what other grant? Oh, then I am putting in for the feasibility study anyway, even though Sullivan Renaissance hasn't said that they, they will be awarding anything currently, but we'll just have our application all ready to go. As far as the SAM grants, I think that would be you, Ben. Ben?
They'll be with you in one second. We're having some technical difficulties.
Yeah, as far as the SAM grants go, Jane, those we're still working on and we've got something coming up in the new business as far as some of the town hall replacement.
Okay. I guess that's it for grants.
Okay.
Except what we'll discuss coming up.
That we can do. Going to open up for a public comment. Would request that comments be directed to the board and identify yourself prior to comments so the clerk can unmute you.
This is Sue Powell. Can you, I don't know if this is appropriate.
Yes.
Oh, okay, you can hear me. I just would like to know, and maybe it's going to be under old business. If we do have a leash law in town and do we also have, is a record kept of dog violations and do they have a, like one strike, you're out or two strikes, you're out? You know, where the dog has to be put down if it's bitten somebody?
We actually, old business number two. I don't know if it's going to answer all your questions, Sue, but those that I don't answer, please feel free to give me a call and I will try to answer them for you later on. Jennifer?
Hi, everybody. Hi. Good, how are you? So this is Jennifer Potato from Down on the Flats. I happen to be one of the victim of the dog attacked that happened on April 19th. So I just wanted to, one, thank Susan for sending a message to the town to alert you all of what happened, what has been happening down here. I just wanted to give a little background and kind of talk about some other solutions that we've installed here in our house to deal with the situation. We were walking with our two dogs, my wife Danielle, I'm sure you all know her, and up Fourth Avenue and out of nowhere, a gentleman said to me, you might want to pick up your dog. And I turned around and before I knew it, a pit bull was charging us and had my dog in its mouth. And then I jumped in to get the dog off of our dog and then the dog bit my left forearm. I have 10 wounds. It was a really interesting experience. The gentleman was visiting from out of town at a house that's typically Airbnb. He was a friend of the family. He recently adopted this pit bull. He was sitting in the grass with a dog in a very leisurely way without a leash. So I, you know, we reported to state police, Nico knows, health department, everybody was involved. It really did concern us from, you know, from being a resident here, we walk almost every day that we can, the weather is good, so many of us do. This wasn't the first incident, though. This was a visiting dog, but we do have a lot of dogs down here, all with different, you know, annoyances to the community, ours especially. They're very barky. But there is a rottweiler that's living at 119 Fourth Avenue that has charged people and gotten loose out of that house, out of that home. That happened about three months ago. We were with our dogs and all of a sudden. Also another dog that lives down here on Delaware Avenue that is also often not on a leash and has approached different people. It's a very fluffy dog, so some may not find it to be scary, but it's still a matter of, you know, dogs potentially getting in conflict, so on and so forth. So we are actually investing money to put a fence in our backyard so that our dogs have a safe place to be outside and that we aren't concerned with walking with them. But it's definitely an issue and, you know, given the pandemic, on a beautiful day down on the flats, we're seeing more traffic here than ever before, which is wonderful in one sense because people are finding peace and recreation here, which is wonderful. But at the same point, we're, there's a lot of people coming and there's a lot of people even coming with their dogs. We met somebody that was, lives over in Pennsylvania and had said that they had just saw their neighbors that, with their dog, walking down here on the flats. So I think it's important that we just address the guidelines that may be, need to be in place. If they're not, I don't know. And I'm sorry for not being familiar with the town guidelines already, but it is definitely something that I think we should take a look at and, you know, educate people, even, you know, ourselves. I mean, we didn't really think about having proper harnesses or fencing the dogs in and something we really need to think about for their protection, for our protection. And we do advertise this community as a walking trail. So there is a potential liability issue with inviting people here to walk our streets when we have dogs that are off-leash and in situations where they're potentially scaring or attacking. And I would like the Airbnbs to even, if they are allowing dogs, to know those guidelines so that they are listed and they are provided when people come and stay, if they're allowing animals, that they understand the guidelines of the town for the safety of everyone involved, the dogs, individuals. It's about having, you know, a healthy and safe community. I think we all feel the same way on that. So thank you for your time and, you know, I appreciate, you know, letting me speak and hopefully we can come together to move this forward. Thank you.
Yeah, you will, you'll see that in old business under number two, that we've got a couple of discussions and hopefully it'll answer some of your questions anyway.
Great, thanks, Ben.
Any other comments?
Steven Stewart?
Steven Stewart?
Hi, I'm Stuart. Jennifer, so sorry to hear about the episode you had with a dog. Two comments. First part is, you know, that whole issue of Airbnb rentals, the town really needs to look at. Airbnb is a transient form of housing and transient housing has really not been allowed or permitted in single-family dwellings because of fire safety. It's a total violation of the Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code. And secondly, really violates a lot of our zoning laws. So the town needs to look at that. Airbnb is a transient form of housing, and transient housing has really not been allowed or permitted in single-family dwellings because of fire safety. It's a total violation of the Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code. And secondly, it violates a lot of our zoning laws, so the town needs to look at that. And I'd be very happy to work with the town on figuring that out. It's something that I've studied for the last year and a half, and I'm quite passionate about it. It violates a lot of our town protocols and zoning, and definitely the fire prevention laws. My second comment is, please do not assign ill to all pit bulls. My daughter adopted a pit bull that was abandoned after Katrina, and this, this pit has been just a very loving, gentle dog to my daughter, her husband, and their two little beings, family. Very gentle, protective, yes, but Eddie would, would be protective to those two little babies by just quietly going and sitting in between that baby and anyone coming into the house. Never snarl, never a growl, never a lunge. So please don't describe bad behavior and demonize all pit bulls, because they are beings. Their owners often make them, and I see from what my daughter and her, and her husband did with Eddie, he's just, he was, they had to put him down late last week because he had just shut down. But he was always a very gentle, loving being, so please don't characterize all pit bulls as demons. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Any other comment?
Yes, it's Iris.
Yes, Iris.
So I live in the flats, and I have to concur with some of the, many of the things that Jen said, and as far as pit bulls are concerned, or rottweilers, they do have a history, and I'm sure that, like people, some are wonderful and some are not. However, that does not preclude the fact that we do have a great number of people walking down in the flats, plus the fact that if you want to have any kind of large dog, or any kind of dog, there should be something that perhaps a fenced-in area so that the dog can be free to run around and not into the road where people are walking. And if you come down to the flats, you will see that happens frequently. So there are people who have done electric fences, and that has contained their dogs, which is fine, but I think that it is really very important to make sure that if we are having this as an invitation for people to come and explore the trail, and so on and so forth, and even for residents. It has happened for me as well, that I have had some experiences, negative experiences with dogs, whether they be pit bulls or non-pit bulls, and it is very daunting, and I have seen people who are not part of the flats stop dead in their tracks when dogs run out onto the street, and they don't know what to do, they don't know who the dogs are, they don't know whatever. And so I really do think that this is something that really can't just be pushed into some corner, this really needs to be addressed. Thanks.
Hi, I don't know, I don't know if you can see me or see my other part of the room.
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. I guess I do have a dog, and, but I did put down in the thing that you asked us to fill out, not the census, but I would like to get a dog park down on the flats. I think there are a lot of dogs down this way, and I think that would maybe alleviate the problem with the, with maybe dog owners. I, I don't know if everybody else feels that way, but I think a lot of people would like that. I'm sorry that someone was injured from a dog. I, I always feel it is the owner, not the dog, and I am sorry for your injuries, but I would like to get a dog park. Thank you.
Thank you. Star? Star, are you still there?
She's muted.
Should be unmuted. Star?
Says muted, next to her name.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Okay. I just have two questions. First, about the letter that was sent out to me and to the board members today. I was kind of disappointed at the timing, because was that emailed as well as put in the regular mail?
It's not been put in the regular mail, but I'm not going to discuss it during conversation with you, Star.
I don't want to be discussing it. I just thought if it was going to, I would have liked to.
We can have a Zoom. We can do a Zoom if you want, Star, and then have a better discussion for it. I know we had talked about having that earlier.
We would like a discussion, but I just would have liked to have been able to see the letter, at least before this meeting was held, since we sent that in quite a bit.
I sent that, well, I do it out today. I sent it to you by email today.
Okay, I, all right, fine, that's, that's one thing. The other thing I just wanted to comment on, when they put the hydrant in, in front of the post office, they did some damage to the wall there. There's an indentation, and the bricks are sort of pushed out of shape, that may be because they had to had some sort of clearance for the top of the hydrant, but I was just wondering if somebody from, I was the highway department who did that?
That was done by, so that was done by the sewer and water department, and the reason that the, the wall is back a little bit is because they needed that in order to open up the hydrant, the placement of the hydrant right there. There wasn't enough to put the wrench on there, so that they ended up putting that back a little bit, so that was a reason for the indent.
All righty, thank you.
Jennifer?
Hi again, Jennifer from the flats. I just wanted to comment one last time on the, on Linda's concept of the dog park. I was a big proponent of the idea before all this happened, because it just put into reality how much of a draw that will be, and how now we now have more dogs in a contained area, and potentially next to the playground. And that was a big concern for us, too, is that this, this, this dog was directly across from the playground down here on the flats. We don't have a lot of children, but we certainly do have some, and we want to make sure that they're protected. And the dog park idea, again, is something I thought was a good idea, and I really started to stop to think about it, and it really concerned me to be, to be drawing people in with dogs into a contained area like that, near potentially, you know, the children's park. So just wanted to throw that out there. I mean, these are things we have to talk about, but I just wanted to, to comment again on that thing.
Any other comments? We'll go into old business. First on old business is health and safety. The town is in the process of formula, formulating our plan on opening the town hall after the New York cause gets rolling, as more things get opened. We are still closed to the public at this point. We, you are able to make appointments within the next week, probably this week. We, one of the things that we're going to do is a construction of an interior door with a glass partition for the passing of documents. So this way, if somebody's got something they need to do, either with the clerk of the building department, water and sewer clerk, they just need to generally drop off or receive items from any of those departments, they'll actually be able to make an appointment, be able to come to the town hall and conduct business, albeit there will be a barrier between the public and the people that are working inside of the building. We'll also be available for people that need to do inspections of records. We will have the community hall available, so that they will be able to view records there through the town clerk's office and buy an appointment. We've been very lucky that we've been able to keep things rolling with meetings and things like that, but that's what we're looking at as far as formulating our plan, until we can be open totally for the public. For dog control, we've got the leash law, the town animal control officer. Today, as a result of speaking with the attorneys for the town, our animal control officer will be meeting with the town attorney, formulating a plan, and then we'll make a report at the special meeting that we're going to have at the end of this month. We do have a, dog control officer has a law, it was from 1982, and then there was some things in that, increased fees for unlicensed dogs and dogs running at large, that was in 2008 that was done. We do understand that there is a problem with this, and we do understand that we need to formulate some sort of a plan. Some good points that have been brought up, especially with COVID-19 going on right now, we do have a lot of people that have come to town, not only on the flats, but in the Ten Mile River area. The amount of people and the amount of animals that we've seen has increased substantially. We're, we're at a level now, I don't think that we're normally in the summertime as far as people here. I know that we'll come up with something. We look forward to any, anything you've got, Jennifer. You know, we appreciate the fact that you, you came here with that to us. It's kind of a hard thing to go through and then be able to sit here and tell people about it.
Ben, if I could just jump in, Nico did contact my partner Jackie today, and they anticipate meeting, I believe, this week to try to just go through what enforcement issues there are and other issues with respect to, you know, regulation, leash laws, et cetera. And it wouldn't be a bad idea to maybe look into the idea of developing legislation to address short-term rentals, if they are things that are happening in the town, so we can talk about that moving forward.
I think that would be good. The majority of the homes right now that are Airbnb are being occupied by the owners, but I think once they get back to operating again, the amount of turnover that we have here is amazing, so definitely something we're going to need to talk about. Under that, we've also got under dog control, and the second part is an authorization to purchase a number of dog leash law. I guess similar to the one she's got up there. It's also got a cleanup after your pet. And looking to put these at the Ten Mile River access and also down on the flats. Does the board have any comments at all? I know Nico will be with us, and we'll figure out how many of these we want to get.
I do. It's Brandy.
I do that.
So, so I drove down around the flats, trying to figure out how many signs should be there. I mean, you don't overwhelm a neighborhood with them, but you want to see that your dog has to be on a leash. It's not targeting any particular breed, it's all dogs, protect all people and all dogs. So I think that we should talk to the residents also, I mean, their neighborhood, I don't want to overwhelm it with signs, but I don't want to understate it either. We also talked about sending a flyer to every resident, telling them they have to be licensed, they have to have their dogs on a leash, they have to pick up after their dog, just spell it out. Unfortunately, not everybody who's up here now lives here full-time, so they may not have a mailing option, so that's why those signs are important, I think. And I don't know, Ben, if you want to post the new signs on an existing poll?
I think that's what we need to look at.
Because, I mean, I'm driving around by myself, thinking, why did it decide anything here, you know? But I think if, if any resident says you're walking or driving, and you have any ideas where, and not many, that would be helpful.
I'm thinking of, you know, if, when you turn down Fifth before you come to the residential area, and then definitely down by the, by the dog park, and then obviously, or dog park, the playground. Start with the park already, and down by the Ten Mile River.
Yeah, Ten Mile River.
Ten Mile River, I, yeah.
We want to get out, we want to get the word out there, but we also don't want to create the sign pollution that comes with everybody putting 10 things up. But I, I think that's, that's something after, after Nico and Jackie talked, that we can, we can go ahead and, you know, the signs aren't that expensive, so we'd be able to have, you know, Nico will purchase as many as we determine that we need.
Yeah, Ten Mile River, my thing is not just down by the access, it really needs to be in a couple places on the road and going up to the Ten Mile River, to the Tustin Mountain Trail. There's a lot of people who take their dogs up that way.
Yep, I agree. So we will revisit this after Nico and Jackie talk, and then we can, we can put that on with the next meeting, and then go from there.
I mean, we can recess it too, Ben, because the people are here now, and I don't want this to go on for weeks, you know? If we could get this together before the next meeting, that would be good.
As far as, we've, we've got a leash law that we can use at this point in time, so we don't need to necessarily, necessarily recess for that. There is a whole section within our law as far as dogs running at large, and that includes on their, on people's own property. Just because the dogs run somebody's own property doesn't mean that they, they can give up control of that dog. It's, it's pretty clear in what we've got so far. The thing we did in 2008 was we increased the penalties for that. I think as important as it is for Nico and Jackie to me, is coming up with a plan that we are going to be able to notify and inform the people that are coming here, what, what their responsibilities are. Most good dog owners are responsible enough to know that you don't let your dog run at large, including on your own property, when other dogs and people are there, but we need to get out there and figure out a way we can do that.
Yeah, there, from how I see it, I think there are three things. There's education, compliance, and enforcement, and I think you always hope that enforcement efforts are not absolutely, absolutely necessary, because people then, people become educated and are more compliant, but there is some degree of enforcement that we have to deal with and address, and, and I think that's where the conversation between Jackie and Nico really is going to center.
I think we've got enough on the books now that we can, we can work with, and then pick this up, and Jennifer, if we could reach out with you, and Iris, anybody that's, that's got some ideas, feel free to give us a call on them.
Okay.
Little Lake Erie Culvert, Schumacher reference to Cackle Town Dam and the Broken Culvert. Jane got hold of Schumacher regarding that, gave them the information. Jane, did you have anything you wanted to report on that at all?
I have their response right in front of me. And basically, they said that the Cackle Town Road Beaver Dam was included in their study, their hydraulic study of Little Lake Erie, and our investigations of Cackle Town Road included speaking with the landowner, landowner, and the Sullivan County Soil and Water Conservation District. The outlook configuration was estimated based on the most recent updates to the culverts as explained by the Sullivan County Soil and Water District. The history of beaver dams, they say, and subsequent failings of beaver dams were also discussed when they did their study, but modeling a breach of the beaver dam structure was not included in the hydraulic model for Little Lake Erie. The beaver dam itself has not been modeled, and it is not considered a permanent flow control structure, so that's why they didn't include it in the model. That was that report.
Under Architectural Engineering Consultant Agreement, we put forth a motion to authorize the Deputy Supervisor Jane Luxinger to sign the Architectural Engineering Consulting Agreement on behalf of the town of Tustin, and as the representative for the town of Tustin and Project Pin 974.85.
Second.
I just wanted to add that this is professional services, so you don't need to follow your procurement policy for the amount, because it is professional services, so this is properly done in a, in this form.
Oh, that's good.
Oh, Ben's muted.
Sorry about that. I just kicked something and everything went away. I'm sorry, who was my second? I, Jill?
The motion and who seconded?
I will second the motion. I, Jane?
I.
Jill?
I.
Brandy?
I.
And Bruce?
I.
Thank you. Narisburg Water and Sewer. We discussed this a little bit at the, the work session. Sewer and Water Superintendent is looking for authorization to purchase equipment from Badger Equipment. Both equipment and software. We have a quote from Schmidt's Wholesale for updating of the current system, which includes software training and new meter heads. We've run into a couple of different problems. The biggest being that the equipment that we have does not work with Windows 10 for the radio frequencies in the program. And the heads that we have right now for the radio frequencies for obtaining the meter readings no longer work with the new equipment. So they're looking to change, start changing out the heads in the water district and getting the training with the new program. Don't know, has any of, outside of the Sewer and Water Committee, I don't know if anybody is familiar with any of this. Do you have it there? Do you have that, the Badger one?
I guess I would also ask pursuant to the procurement policy, were there other bids sought?
There were no other bids on this.
Other bids sought?
Nobody would quote them for it. Yeah.
As long as he keeps the documentation of that, that's
He's got that. Some people would not go out. It's a a total with the training and software comes out to 18,550. So it's a, it's a pretty large purchase. That's for the handheld cradles, the modules for it. On-site training. And then it's got a yearly, it's a $1,500 a year for the the program updates and the recurring fees, login services.
Do we have any recurring annual fees on what they're using now?
I don't believe that we do, but I do not know the answer to that question. They had a hard time this year with with some of the equipment and especially once we, we upgraded into Windows, Windows 10. But he has been working with Badger to find out what would work with the heads that we have now with some of the newer heads, because not all the heads were put in at the same time. So we're, they were phased in over the series of years. So
Probably get new ones again, maybe.
Yeah, which ones again?
You want to make sure that whatever we get works with new equipment as well.
That, that's what it, that's why he ended up with this and that's why we're having a, a little bit of an issue getting anybody to come in with us.
It seems like a lot of money, but I don't really think we have a choice. It has to be done.
It, yeah, it does, it does have to be done. I know Dave's put a lot of work into this. And his concern was about a month ago, when he came to me and he couldn't find anybody that was willing to give him any quotes. Schmidt's was the only one that was willing to work with him.
And I think they're pretty fair, Schmidt's. All right, so do you need a motion to, go ahead?
I, I would need a motion authorizing a Sewer and Water Superintendent to accept the quote from Schmitz Wholesale, the amount of $18,550 for the equipment, software and training regarding the water meter readings.
I make that motion.
Make some motion. I'm sorry, the second?
I'll second it.
Jill's the second. Jane?
Uh, yes, I.
Brandy?
I.
Bruce?
I.
Jill?
I.
And I'm an I.
And here's the good news too, guys, is that their, their quote for what we're doing the bills today with the fire hydrants and stuff, we had, came in $11,000 less than the bill came in $11,000 less than the quote. So there's $11,000 can be towards, you know, basically towards this. We've saved $11,000 and while this is high, it's helpful.
What about the $1,800 item? Do you need to do that? Or I, it got scrolled up, so I can't see.
I believe, no, that, they should be fine with that as far as the recurring fee. That's the annual servicing of the units. The annual user logins and the host fees per meter. We should be good with that part. And the software updates that were needed, that would be the recurring fees. Okay. And the last one, which is the software updates, that is the the meeting with the company demonstrating the billing program. Because the billing program we have didn't work with the new meters and it works with no meters at all. So that we will have, hopefully Dave will be here and the next one, if anybody's got any questions regarding that.
No.
Number five, set the public hearing for the parking law. Danielle, before we do that, I'm assuming I should probably read this resolution?
Yes.
On the Town of Tustin Resolution Introducing Local Law and Providing for Public Notice and Hearing Be Resolved in an Inductory Local Law Title, A Local Law to Amend Chapter 255 By Prohibiting Parking on Bridge Street Be In Hereby Is Introduced Before the Town Board of the Town of Tustin, County of Sullivan, State of New York. It is further resolved that the proposed local law is a type two action under SEACRA and can be considered without further review. It is further resolved that copies of the aforementioned proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each town board member. It is further resolved that the proposed local law is hereby referred to the Sullivan County Division of Planning, Community Development and Real Property for review pursuant to General Municipal Law 239. It is further resolved that the town board shall hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the Tustin Community Hall, 210 Bridge Street, Narisburg, New York at 6:15 PM on June the 9th, 2020. It is further resolved that the town clerk shall publish or cause to be published a public notice in the official newspaper in the Town of Tustin no later than 10 days prior there to.
Can we amend that to talk, have it as a Zoom meeting because we don't know that we'll be able to have a meeting in the town hall?
Sure.
Yes.
And Danielle, if we pass this, you can put up signs, right, that say no, 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 wait, that say parking permitted. There's one little area in front of the library that's indented. And usually when there's a performance at the theater, at the Tustin Theater, there are about three cars that park there. Because this resolution says, or this law, it says no parking on Bridge Street at all, right?
That's what it says.
So if that's the case, but we can put up a sign and I think it would be okay, Ben, you know where I'm talking about, right?
I think it would create a sight distance issue from people trying to leave the town hall.
And the fire department that's there too.
Oh. All right.
Well, and just don't forget, you're going to have a public hearing, so you can hear people's perspectives, the fire department's perspective, your perspective, the town, people in town, their perspective. So after that public hearing, if it seems like it's something you want to amend, that can be done. But as it's written right now, there's no parking on either side in this proposed local law.
Okay.
I would make the motion. I'd look for a second.
Second.
Second by Jill. Jane?
Well, approved pending the public hearing. I guess that's
Yeah, that's all we're doing.
I agree.
Jill?
I.
Brandy?
I.
And I'm an I. Number six, generators works continue, will continue on May the 18th at the Town Hall and Highway Barn. Delaware Engineers currently working with the Water and Sewer Department to see if there is any grant monies available for that. Jane, is there anything more to add to that or I don't believe so?
No, I don't think so either.
Okay.
No, it's okay.
Okay. Lawn mowing bids received. Crystal, where'd you go? Any questions from the board regarding that?
No. We still have to, well, no, we'll discuss that later.
A motion to accept the bid from Glenn Swenson for the lawn mowing.
I will make that.
Okay, I'll take a motion from Bruce and a second by Jane. Jill?
I.
Brandy?
I.
Bruce?
I.
Jane?
Absolutely, I.
I'm an I. Okay. Okay, under new business. We've got two projects that are on the screen right now. One is a town hall roof repair replacement and one is a town hall masonry work, project one and number two. These are works that we're looking at using the Sam monies for. To accept the following specs and authorize a town clerk to advertise that the town board is now accepting bids that are to be received by Friday, June 5th, 2020 at 3 PM. Bids receive will be open Monday, June 8th at 2 PM and awarded tonight on Tuesday, June 9th, 2020 at the town board regular meeting on the following projects. Project number one is a town hall roof repair replacement, which would conclude all existing roof materials to be removed, install 50 years of architectural shingles, install ice and water shields, felt, install new flashing, replace your flat roof overhang in front of the building, install new commercial seamless gutters with a two notices, roof sheathing that requires replacement will be priced per square foot to be determined once the roof is stripped and any unfinished part of the roof must be tarp. Project number two is town hall masonry work to re-point and tuck all brick on the town hall building, clean out loose mortar and then clean with muriatic acid. Type S mortar or equal shall be used, re-mortar, brick and bluestone in front of the building, repair the concrete stairway going down to the furnace room, repair the concrete wall at the entrance to the community hall as well as the retaining wall along the ramp to the community hall, repair the concrete slab at the entrance to the town hall main level. Project number two, a lot of that work came out of the fact that project number one was in disrepair.
What does it mean in the project number one that any unfinished part of the roof must be tarped?
Um, if they're working on a Friday and they're going to be off on Saturday or a Sunday, then it would be tarped in case of inclement weather.
It's a temporary thing.
Yes.
Okay.
Or if we run out of money, it's just tarp.
I don't want to know that.
And these actions are type two under SEACRA, so you don't have to do any review.
Okay.
I would accept the motion to authorize the following specs and authorize the town clerk to advertise as stated in number one.
So moved.
Second.
Jill for a motion, Jane for the second, Brandy?
I.
Bruce?
Yes, I.
Jill?
I.
Jane?
I.
And I'm an I. Okay. Where'd we go? Two things in new business.
Wait, didn't that was just project one or was that project one and two?
One and two.
Okay.
Authorize a purchase of signs at an amount not exceeding $20 per sign to be installed along the 10 Mile River Trails and amount in multi-generational park and these are the no littering signs.
Okay, that, that would be helpful to know. Yes. Yeah.
That's the no litter or that's the dog leash?
No, that's the no litter. The dog, we've already, we're going to be able to do that. Actually, we can do this without a resolution, I believe, because it's well under the procurement policy, so.
Give everybody the image of the sign. Did you see it, Jane?
It's up there now. Yeah, it looks good.
It's a
I don't, Danielle, we don't need a resolution for that for
No.
the amount. So we'll leave, leave that as, we can discuss how many we want, where we want them and we can get them, get them coming. The other one that we will need a resolution for, even though it's going to fall on our expenditures, is authorize expenditure of less than $750 for the removal of falling trees along the sewer and water right of way along the Glen Cove Cemetery North driveway. That's the driveway for the cemetery that is closest to Pete's Market. There's some trees that have fallen to age and weather. They're starting to fall down. They're on our right of way. And I would look for authorization for the expenditure of those monies to start removing them before they are in the driveway of the cemetery.
So moved.
Motion by Jill, a second.
Second.
By Brandy. Jane?
I.
Jill?
I.
Brandy?
I.
Bruce?
I.
And I'm an I. Um, number four, Jill?
Um, I just want to talk to everybody a little bit about polystyrene. I'm going to show you a couple of pictures and, and a sense of things to Crystal, you know, while, while we would rather not have it at all, we still have it. And I do take it over to Spanton. I took a parload today. And there, a lot of things get dropped off in my shed that are not polystyrene and it creates more garbage. This is my car filled with polystyrene. If you can go to the next one. There's a lot of pictures on this and this is the machinery that does it. What this machinery does is, is it breaks it down before breakdown and then it gets heated and it comes out like soft ice cream. That's what it looks like. If you, can you scroll up on that, Crystal? Cause we only see half of the picture. Yeah, so there's the little pellets that it makes and then it heats and the black ones are because they were black. They had, they had tons and tons of improperly made black food trays. So hence it looks like poop. Sorry. But anyway, so this is how it comes out and that weighs, each one of those weighs about 10 pounds, 15 pounds. So, you know, and this company, they, they load a truck and take it away, but there's a lot of things that get brought to my house that are not polystyrene. And so there's my shed when it's not even full. This is not polystyrene. It's bendable. I have a piece here. It's bendable. It is not polystyrene. Please don't leave it in my shed. It just creates more garbage for me. Polystyrene breaks. It is brittle and it breaks. You're holding your ears, Danielle. Kelly didn't know and we were talking about this today, that food trays are polystyrene and polystyrene polystyrene and styrofoam are sort of the same thing. Styrofoam is the company name by DuPont, it is, but so everything really is polystyrene. Most people don't know that, but that's what it is. Um, and again, this is brittle and it will break. It does not, it is not, and please don't bring it to my house. I am very happy to move things off and take them out to Spranton, as I did today, a full carload. Sometimes it's both Star and myself, we've gone the both of us with carloads, that's how much stuff comes in. There's a picture even with Star in it, at one of these. Um, there's also, I put out a list here of things to know and I'm happy to send it to people, we can post it. Um, if it bends, it's not, if it's brittle, food trays, um, it takes up a lot of room. Oh, there was the other picture, if you scroll up, um, please stack things, break them down and stack them. It's very, very cumbersome in space, um, and fills up my shed really fast. So if you could take the time to break your things down, I'd very much appreciate it. And don't break the big polystyrofoam, because you know those little pellets they make, unless you want to clean our cars, you know, I'd appreciate it if you just leave it at full size, don't break it down at all. I had one time where it was, somebody broke every big piece they had into a million little pieces and it took me about an hour just to vacuum my car out, because it sticks to everything, you know? So I'm happy to continue to do this, um, my shed is open and available, it goes on the right. Um, and, um, you know, we keep it, we keep moving forward, so, and we hope that people try not to buy things in polystyrene, but so far that's, you know, we're not real successful with that in, in this area anyway. Um, but soon we will be, because you won't be, they won't be allowed to have it. So, um, again, my shed is open to you guys, um, just don't take anything, okay? But thank you, that's it.
Thanks, Jill.
Yep.
That was informative, I didn't know all of that.
Well, there's actually, um, another, uh, word document that I sent to Crystal that anybody that's interested can get all sorts of information about it besides that. But this, this main, um, you know, I'm happy to send it out, whatever, just let me know, because, you know, I'm happy to do it, but let's do it right. So here, okay, I have a question for Brandy, actually. Brandy, today when I was at, um, the recycling place and there was some of this folding, they said that's soft plastic, we take that with our plastic bags to the crusher. So if you would check, because these are basically plastic. If you would check with trucks to see if they take this kind of stuff?
I'll check it, I had, I've never heard that people, no one ever puts that in, but I'll check it and say, I'll let you know.
Why not, it's better recycled than throw it away.
Oh, yeah, no question.
Yeah, yeah. Here's, here's a two-page thing that, uh, is written up about polystyrene and recycling. And I did a presentation at Homestead High School a few years ago about it, um, and talks a lot about it. So if anybody's interested, just reach out to me and I'm happy to share.
Thank you, Jill.
Yep, yep.
Public comment, again, if you just use your raise your hand button so that Crystal can unmute you and allow you in. I'm sorry. Linda?
Hi, Ben, it's Colin Peters.
Yes, Colin.
Yeah, a couple of things I'd like to verify. You know, you have four people on, uh, on board for the water and sewer department, is that correct?
I.
You have four people on payroll for the water and sewer department?
Yes, we do, we currently have four people on, on board of water and sewer department, yes.
And, uh, we are spending so much of money on TAM to come and do the stuff that the previous water and sewer superintendent did it himself. And now, and I know that for a fact, because I'm a volunteer firefighter. On one evening, one of the hydrants broke down and had driven up that way to come and fix that hydrant, and it was seven feet deep. He was able to use the, the equipment that the department already had. You know, we seem to be fanning out everything to Tom, Dick and Harry, and the people in the water and sewer district are going to be having to foot this bill at some point or the other, wouldn't you think so?
Duly noted.
How come we don't have a citizens advisory board, you know, people that live in the water and sewer district? And they have to meet these, uh, I think ninety, ninety percent of the Green Town Board members do not, do not live in the water and sewer district, so they have no clue what goes on. Uh, isn't four people in, in the water and sewer department, you know, a little up heavy?
I can't say that it is at this particular point, Colin. I mean, it was something that I kind of inherited on the way in the door, um, but given, given the situation that we've got with our water and sewer department right now, um.
I mean, Jane is, you know, Jane is familiar with Dominic and how he operated, and he did ninety percent of the work, and, and I don't remember the frequency with which TAM keeps coming, whenever I see a TAM truck in town, I, I know that they're going to.
Well, I, I would just add that, um, the, you know, the whole district is getting old and it's needs repair, and that's exactly what we're trying to do is, is, uh, you're up for that. But in the meantime, we're going to have to repair what we can. And we're told that our water, uh, people cannot do the job, uh, with the equipment.
I, the people that are not in the department, and that's what defies my imagination. You know, you hire people who cannot operate a, a tractor, who cannot turn on the light switch. You know, why do we hire incompetent people to run the water and sewer department? You know, you have four people on payroll. I mean, the people living in the water and sewer district have to foot that bill. You know, I don't think it's fair to ask people who do not live in the water and sewer district to put that bill. I mean, four people, you know, Dominic was by himself and then he had Snadica as a part-time employee to do the grass cutting and do odds and ends. Now we have four people and we still have to fan out everything.
Actually, Colin, your idea about, you know, some citizen involvement is not a bad idea, and I think it might actually get a little bit of, uh, I'll get a little bit more of information out, I mean, I can read the reports and stuff, um, and it might just, it might be something that's worth looking into as far as the, the board and the sewer and water committee goes.
You know, going way back, you know, from the time of Scott Bernie and even before him, from Bob, not Bob Elko, who was the guy who lived at it, Hal, Bob Hal. Okay, he ran that department by himself, the, the, there's no increase in number of the, of, of, of the taxpayers that are getting the water and sewer, it's the same department, he ran it by himself. Then Bernie ran it by himself with the odds and ends, you know, with part-time employees. Now we've got four people on payroll, four people.
Well, it's not intended to be four people all, uh, forever, uh, it's intended to be three, though.
And I, and I would remind, I would remind those that are here and listening that, uh, there was, uh, training that's being done in grant money that is going to pay for a large percentage of that salary, at least for this coming year, until we can make some decisions on what, you know, what we're going to do with the water and sewer department.
You know, listening to Jane about that they are not able to do what TAM did. TAM changed those three hydrants a couple of weeks ago. And Dominic changed the one by the Lutheran church, and Dominic changed the one up by, by, uh, the.
I think it's related to the depth, isn't it, Ben?
It is, but what, Colin, we'll continue this conversation at another time. Um, I want to go back to just taking comment from the public.
Bring it up, then, you know, I don't.
I know. I under, I understand and I know where you're coming from with it. Star? Star?
Yes. Yes, I, there we go. Um, I just wanted to mention about the dog, uh, advice signs. I would like to suggest you might want to put one, I thought I saw one that would stick in the ground. You could definitely use one of those signs at the post office, uh, under the post office tree. That is a very, uh, what should we say, frequently used spot for people who walk their dogs. Um, most people pick up after their dogs already, but I've also found lovely little sandwich bags of poo tucked in among the flowers and along the edge of that bed. So that would be a good place to have that sign up for those who are going to abide by it.
Sounds like an easy enough suggestion.
Hi, this is Oscar, I can't figure out how to raise my hand to talk, but, um, if I can talk now, or if you have somebody else in line, I can wait.
No, I think Crystal's giving you the go-ahead, she didn't throw anything at me.
Thank you. Um, so I'm a property owner here in, in town at 95 Cackle Town Road. Um, my land actually includes a pond and protected New York State D E C wetlands that run adjacent to the property in which the Beaver Dam upstream, um, from the Little Lake Erie is located. Um, I really want to, to talk to you all, uh, to see if, if we can get some assistance from the town in the matter, uh, related to that Beaver Dam on Cackle Town Road. Recently, there have been several breaches, I've been here since 2015, um, but since about 2018, there have been multiple breaches that have resulted in near complete drainage of the pond. Um, and then, of course, I'm sure you all have seen what that has done downstream to, to the bridge at, at Little, um, at Lake Erie Bridge. Um, ultimately, I think my goal, or what I would like, is to ensure that the bond, the wildlife and the wetlands on my property are obviously protected. And that if any work is done on that, um, Beaver Dam, I don't know if the town is involved in owning the culvert or, or what the situation is, I'd like some clarification. Uh, but that any, um, you know, permits are, are, are applied and that, uh, D E C is involved in, in any of the changes that are, that are done. Um, and just to ensure that the existing water levels, well, there's no water in it now because it breached and it hasn't refilled. Um, but to, just to ensure that it goes back to what it was when I purchased the property. I had three feet of water at the dock and now it's, uh, pretty much all mud. So, um, you know, I, I think that, uh, a pond leveller is something that is considered a, a permanent flow control structure and it could be easily installed. And I'm happy to work with my neighbors, um, to, to get that done.
I did get your emails on that, Oscar, and I've talked to Nico a little bit and sent some back to him. Um, something that we can look at right now, one of the biggest questions that we have is where our right of way is down there as far as if the town were to get involved with something like that. So soon as we can answer those questions, we could probably have more information for you.
Thank you. And I'm happy to obviously cooperate in, I, with Nico as well to, you know, I, I don't want extra burden to, to go on the town. And I realize that, you know, everybody on this road would like to have that, that pond preserved.
Other comments?
Is there anybody that wants to take a comment that's having a hard time raising their hand, everybody was unmuted this time?
I will go to board comment.
Um, I have one.
Up.
Oh, go ahead.
No, Jill.
Oh, Jane, go, Jane.
Um, I. I don't have any comment tonight.
Okay.
Um, one thing, one thing I eliminated was this kind of stuff was dropped also in my shed. It's, you know, insulation, it is not recyclable for polystyrene, so keep it to your own. Find another use for it.
Bruce?
Uh, not, not much comment, I'm just listening.
Yeah.
Randy?
Yes, um, so I just wanted to thank, um, uh, two people for helping with the 9/11 monuments in, in progress. That's Lurch, who found the stone, excavated out of his woods, donated his time, his excavation, his transport, and then he planted it at Veterans Bar. Um, then Nico came in, he's, um, going to be welding. Also, both of these guys are not asking for any money, they're donating their time and effort, which is so appreciated, appreciated. And, um, anyway, so now I see that the 9/11 artifact, a piece of the World Trade Center, is sitting down there. I think it weighs 300 pounds, right, Nico?
No, it's more than that.
Oh, more?
Yeah.
Well, anyway, it got there, I'm just going to make believe it dropped. Um, I think, were the highway guys bringing it, or did Lurch bring it?
I didn't. Highway.
Highway, okay, and, uh, so anyway, now it's in, um, he, uh, uh, Nico has the plaque that will be on the facade of the stone, and then he's trying to somehow hoist that very heavy piece and anchor it to re-bore. And, uh, then we'll, eventually we'll have a ribbon cutting ceremony for those who, um, would like to attend that, if we can, in the future, I hope. Uh, thank you so much for all your work. Thanks, Nico.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's it, thank you.
Uh, one thing before we get into the meeting reminders and stuff, um, and I know I'm probably getting a little bit of trouble for saying this, but, uh, we, the town clerk ran a Zoom report for the month of April. And, uh, just to give people an idea of the amount of time that went into getting this together for everybody, uh, the zoning board of appeals, the planning board, and pretty soon it's going to be for the grievance board. Uh, the town clerk oversaw 6,450 minutes of meetings and training on Zoom, so 107.6 hours on top of the regular part of the job. So, um, when these things go off and they work very well, um, that's person you can thank.
I would like to add something to that.
Yes, Iris.
Um, considering the fact that Crystal has been doing such an exemplary job, when it comes, when it comes time for budgeting, uh, perhaps maybe there could be some financial remuneration for all the work that she has been doing, because without that work, we would not be sitting here on Zoom or anything else. And she has been really extraordinary in what she has been doing, so that's.
Let's not get nuts with the money.
Can I add to that as well?
Yes.
We represent a, a number of other municipalities and the counties, and Crystal has been a resource for those towns and villages as well, and has really, really, really been dedicated to this and has done a great job. So I just wanted to mention that as well.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thanks, Crystal.
Thank you, Crystal.
Kudos to Crystal. Give her a few extra shekels.
Put some shekels into that.
Just, just to let you know that when this all started out, we sat down and Crystal said to me, you know, they've got Zoom, they've got all these ideas, you know, how do you want to, you know, what do you want to do with these meetings? And how do you want to do them? And then she says, do you want to do them, or do you want me to do them? I made the right choice. Uh, meeting reminder, and we have a special meeting Tuesday, May 26th, reference to horse environmental review. And I believe that that will also, uh, take up with Nico and Jackie as far as what recommendations they have regarding the dogs.
And also.
Yes.
6:20?
6:20.
I think that's what it was, I just want to make sure.
It will say 6:30 on the Zoom notices, and that's only because Zoom runs on a 30-minute increment. So it's listed at 6:30, but as always, I'll definitely be opening it probably around 6:15. Um, but it is 6:20 and that's how it's been advertised.
Okay.
And I hope the board will.
What is that date again, please? I'm sorry, what is that date again?
May 26th.
2/6?
Yeah.
Danielle, you want to?
Yes, um, also for the board's consideration will be some resolutions at, assuming the environmental review goes well, um, author, retroactively authorizing application for the grant, you know, et cetera. So, um, I'll have those documents prepared in advance.
And next Monday, next Monday night, next Monday night is the, uh, planning board meeting and they will discuss the Wayne parking lot.
Crystal, on the agenda, we don't have a time for the 26th. What is the time?
6:20.
6:20, okay.
Peters has a question.
If there's no further business before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Jane, and second by Jill. Randy?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Who am I missing, Jill?
Jill, aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ben.
Come on, everybody.
Thank you, Ben.
Bye, everybody. Be safe.